So what do you take, anything?
Oh, I'll take some kind of painkillers. And they just follow me all over the place. Finally, I can say we ate my boots back on it. So I quit taking them and I'm just here to take some time off.
You tried to leave it?
No, you know, some people swear by that.
I do.
Do you?
Yeah, I do.
And I think you've got some there. I've always used Tylenol, I think I might try that too, I guess.
Nothing mentioned, nothing given?
Yeah. Yeah, I still haven't, I haven't been to a bed yet, I still don't care.
Oh, darn it.
Eleven days, but I do sleep pretty good, though.
Do you?
Yeah.
Is it a recliner? Get back?
Yeah, it's kind of, you know, I don't go back too much. It might have been my combination between the pills and something so much like that.
Yeah.
Cause you're in the wheelchair for twenty hours a day, I suppose. Now I get up and walk around and back and...
Bob says the same thing when he takes painkillers. He said it just makes him loopy. He doesn't like to take them.
Oh, I lost my app, I didn't want to eat and everything tasted terrible, but I finally got, I happened to have a painkiller for four or five days now, so I'm coming out of that. So I guess just take time, go over, get the hooker.
I've noticed that. Darn it.
And I'm good. This has been pretty easy. We've gotten a little overawed, really comfortable last time I was visiting this. I was kind of walking outside and I don't know, something came up to me, I said, I shut that thing and went, oh darn, I come back, I thought of a thing, then it kind of, I must have pulled something that was sort of dampish. Anyway, well, you know how it is, you've been through all this.
I don't, only to, so are you wearing a belt, things around your hands?
No, you know, I have a thing I wear around my back sometimes. And I was wearing it up high during the while, but you know, anymore, they don't take it off. But you're usually take your...
Right.
I guess sometimes that can cause me more, that's what hurting with it, they didn't do anything about me.
I guess it would make sense, but I think about it.
That's a big thing, you don't want to get it.
Oh, no.
No matter what you get, if you're getting... Well, it's a rumor. Bob's probably had a rodeo, rodeo in his.
You know, it just, with the ranch, moving cows, the horse went one way and he went the other way into trees in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
That's the one time Junior helped me, really get a couple of big old steers to track it over the gate and he slid down into it and smashed her. Luckily, it was kind of a V, still smacked, and I think it busted two rigs on her that time.
She's not very big.
No. That's probably good, cause she was wedged in the corner, probably, and they were pretty good size, but still, at any time, we kind of, I was talking to a guy a while back, and he, the cow smashed it into the side, and it busted five rigs on the other side.
Oh, man.
Well, that's what tells, dangerous.
Was it? I'd forgotten about that.
Yeah. You get that complications from it, Junior.
Well, you can sure see how you get in the morning, because you can't really like your doctor to do that.
Yeah, and then you go to breathe, now they say you should, you take a deep breath. Yeah, that's a while, I couldn't even talk very much, you're bothering me, but we get past that stage.
Or else you're getting used to it. Good morning, everybody. Please stand for your pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning and welcome. Thank you for being here. Uh, community update, Franklin.
Oh, I made it to the city council meeting with it, just did a discussion of public safety. Oh, but I want to clear up, I filed, I called Ann on the fifteenth, I mean, I called it the health court advisory group committee that I went to, and it was, it's the health court restoration committee.
Ah.
And I said it wrong there, and that's the one, I think I told you, they're just an advisory for the BLM fishing game in Helena, B-Rit National Forest. They're just a, they'll bring proposals to them, stuff like that, but they're not, they're not, not the advisory committee.
Okay.
I had it wrong, it's restoration. But anyway, I want to be that clear.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, Laura.
Um, I also attended the city council meeting where we discussed setting up a public safety department and a public safety commission. And we're going to have a meeting coming up, I think on the eighteenth, to discuss that further. Also, the J-LOSE was the big thing last week. The J-LOSE is the joint land use study and it's Broadwater County, Townsend, Helena, Lewis and Clark County, and the National Guard. And what it is, is again, we've talked about this a couple of times, just a study to see how we can better work together and maintain the relationship that we have. It's totally separate than withdrawal. And I did bring some paperwork, if anybody is interested and would like just some facts on what it is. We had both a policy committee in Helena on Thursday, there was the technical advisory committee the day before, and then the second public meeting at the school Wednesday night. And of course, we've had several other meetings, so I'm just going to put those there, and if you guys want some, I can pass them down too.
Okay. Okay, I guess we've got time for a little bit of mail. I've got a set of minutes for November fourth, last Monday.
Yeah, there we go, real quick, I think they're...
Those were sent out to us last Tuesday or Wednesday, and I hope that we approve the minutes up November fourth, 2013.
Ann, you're phenomenal. And you're pretty darn good wordsmith, too.
I'll, I'll check it out.
It's moved to second end, that we approved the minutes on November fourth, on February sixth, aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. Okay. We've got to get Mike to fix that clock. It's for a public hearing on the national greater sage grass planning strategy. They're all in Idaho. Murphy Idaho, Idaho Falls, Sam in Idaho, Dillon, oh, sorry, one in Montana, Dillon, Popatella, Flint Falls, and Boise. So anybody that's interested, it's here. This is from M.B.A.C., and it's written to Duane Visser, or Visser, Centennial Wood Products down at Three Forks. Dear Mr. Visser, this letter is a reminder that your current loan with Montana Department of Commerce is indifferent until December thirty first, 2013. Beginning January one, 2014, regular monthly payments will again be due to the department. Your regular scheduled monthly payment will amount to three thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. If you'd like to request another defer on this loan, I need to have a letter from you and one from Broadwater County requesting the deferment no later than December fifteenth, 2013, and an order for the loan review committee to act on your request before the end of the year. If we do not receive a request from your deferment, from you, we will take the appropriate steps to withdraw your scheduled payment from your account beginning January seventh, 2014. If you have any questions or concerns regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me at, it gives Deborah De Mari's program manager, her email and her phone number.
And just a point of clarification, that's from the Montana Department of Commerce, but I do think we should send M.B.A.C. a copy, since they've been working with him quite a bit.
Right. And I, I was wrong when I said M.B.A.C., it is Department of Commerce. This is from Public Service Commission, a notice of application for sale and transfer of operating authority. And the transferer is Carrie Ann Pintler, doing business as Amazing Adventures, transferee is Lightning Ram, Inc., Bozeman Airport Express. And people have until November twenty-sixth, 2013, to send in comments. The credit management, that's not new, is it?
No. I think so.
Management by that?
Yeah.
The credit app at Burt's Industrial Hardware, just for the county, period. We need approval on that?
Just the application for credit, is that what it is?
Yes.
I will move that we sign the application for credit with Burt's Industrial Hardware.
It's moved to second end, that we sign the credit app for Burt's Industrial Hardware here in Townsend, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. In the local agreement for adult detention services between Broadwater County and Lewis and Clark County? It's just a blank plate?
I think that's where, or is this just another one that's going to be signed?
It just has to be signed.
This is a different inter-local agreement, this one is between Broadwater County and Lewis and Clark County, something fairly new that they're doing, it's my understanding this was requested by Wen on behalf of Nick. And with that in mind, I will move that we sign the inter-local agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Broadwater.
And I don't see anywhere where there's a date, for how long this goes? Moved to second end, that we sign the inter-local agreement for adult detention services between Broadwater County and Lewis and Clark County, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. This is regarding the Missouri Madison River Fund Board of Directors. Dear Broadwater County Commission, for many years, Broadwater County has participated as a member of the Missouri Madison River Fund Board of Directors. The position on the board for Broadwater County is currently vacant. On behalf of the board in PPL Montana, I would like to request an appointment to the board for Broadwater County. The annual meeting of the River Fund Board of Directors will be held on Wednesday, December fourth, in Helena. Information for this upcoming meeting will be sent to board members in late November. For your information, I have attached, I guess not, a list of current members. So we need to appoint somebody to that.
Well, we can, I know we can get an hour, do it whenever, but I suppose...
Probably the sooner the better.
I would go, but I won't this fourth, because I believe that's when I'm going to be at the conference.
Oh, sure. Okay.
With that in mind, Chair, I think we need to have, since there hasn't been a presence from Broadwater County for quite some time, I think we need to appoint someone who can jump in ASAP, I believe, and meet just once a year. So if we don't do it this fourth of December, we're waiting till next December, and I think that's too long. So if you are interested, I would be happy to nominate you, if you are not, with your recuperating, I would be happy to nominate me.
I'm fine with that. You know, any one of us can go at any time, it's not like it's closed door.
They do want a appointed member, and I think that's what the members list is for. If, if we want to circulate it like we do the chairmanship, that would be fine, but I do think we need to have a presence there this December.
What's your thoughts? You know, it doesn't sit at one time.
Is it just once a year, maybe?
Yeah.
Unless there's initial insurance.
Okay, we'll come back to this, come on up, Brian. Find your board members.
Come up, you can stay back there.
I can be here.
Good day.
Good day. And to you.
Always love these Mondays that fall on Tuesdays.
That makes Tuesday really rash, it is.
It makes five days of trash kind of do the four. So we're, we're trying to catch up. In the last month, things have been okay. I've had some issues with the loader that we had to take care of, but it's running okay now. We did get the trickle charger put on, it, that seems to help with starting it. The problem we had with that was, we don't run it long enough to keep the, for the alternator to keep the batteries charged up, so as we run it, and it would sit, the batteries would drain down and wouldn't have another cranky car to start it, even if it was plugged in. Now we've got it set up where, when it's plugged in, there's a trickle charge going to the batteries to keep them topped off, and it's been started. Uh, what else?
Did you spray the radiator in place, or was that robed?
We put radiator in the canister truck. But it, it was leaking, we took it down to Salzman's, they looked at it, so yeah, the radiator looks bad. It's a, it was an interesting deal with that. We took it down about noon on Friday. Steve called, Steve Salzman called the, the shop in Missoula, that he gets parts for them for sterling trucks. He had one in his shop at three o'clock Friday afternoon.
Wow. Nice.
And had it installed the next day, and we were up and running again. But it leads me to believe that that is a part that may fail quite often, because they've got them on the shelf like that. And they're, they're plastic, it's a plastic unit, but the metal core is all it is.
Oh, is that right?
You can't rebuild them, so hopefully we'll get as many years out of the second ones as we did out of the first ones.
So have you ever seen one of those plastic ones before?
No.
Have you?
No. Now, is the core, is it, or is it aluminum?
The core is, is an aluminum copper core, but the frame on the outside of it is all plastic. So if it gets a leak in the seam, we've got to replace the whole.
That must be kind of throwaway type thing for them.
Yeah, they're, they're made for quick replacement and sell more of them. So, but they do weigh less, so it keeps the economy up in the truck, I'm sure is why they do it. We've got everything else pretty well ready for winter. We've been hauling or having loose cardboard haul to Belgrade. We've hauled, had them come up and get it twice in the last month, which is a little more than I thought we would have to do, but, so either we're generating more cardboard or we're really good at bailing it when we bail it. The problem with that is it, it's, we're losing money at it, you know, like we get half the price for loose cardboard as we do for baled cardboard. We are going to look at what it would take to consolidate our twenty-yard cans into a forty-yard canister. If we get a forty-yard canister full, that makes sense for us to haul it down, we'll make one trip, and we get a round trip with that can instead of figuring out a way to have, to try to save as much money as we can before members resell it. We've been having them bring back canisters and haul material back, so their truck is full both ways. If we just have cardboard haul, then they have to deadhead their truck here, then they go, and it just adds more cost to the process as well. But I haven't seen a bill from them yet, I don't know what it's costing us to do that, I don't know if that bill's going to B C D C, or if that's coming to us, because we still haven't made that transfer. The, there is going to be an ad in this week's paper for a solid waste employee, I believe it's being listed as a site attendant. That person will also be responsible for operating from, site attendant work, relief driver, just add another person to the department, so it will, it will free, free me up to do more managerial stuff, it'll also allow for department staff to take a break and use up some of the vacation time that's been accumulated, so hopefully we can have somebody onboard by the first of the year, I would think, I think that ad runs until, I think the position closes the end of this month, it'll be this December they're going to be and hopefully there's somebody on the first page of the line or near that time.
A full-time position?
Yes. Salary will be dependent on qualifications. I think there's, there's quite a bit of interest for it, we've heard a lot through the great amount of people that are interested, so it'll be fun, the solid waste board, looking forward to going through the interviewing process with that. And the other thing we've been working on is the, the Perry building issue. There is a letter, I've seen a draft of it, with our needs, it's in the process of getting final input and collecting the signatures for that to be presented to you folks.
By your board?
By my board, by the weed board, and Ms. Kiefer's. So it'll be a joint letter, so it takes a while to collect all the signatures, but all three boards have been, have had the opportunity to look at that building and see if it meets their needs, that they think better than they need for space, and so far everybody's been okay with what they see. I did send you guys an email that I received from the engineering firm that we used to look at that building, that was a, was a photograph of the front page of the Phillips County News, big headline across that Phillips County Mission approved, three hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and eight dollars, I think it was, to build a new sixty-by-eighty-foot, nineteen-foot-high structure in Dodson for their road crew. I thought that was a pretty timely article. Three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to build a brand-new building is pretty darn close to what they thought it would take to build a building here.
That's also close to what they said it would take, if you take that forest service part, so I guess you'd say.
Their experience shows with the rebuilding a building like that, you save about fifteen percent from the cost of rebuilding it. So they're writing the book. And I read a little bit of the article that you could read on that photo, and it was, they put it out for public bid, they had one contractor provide a bid. Granted, it is on the high line, most of the big contractors are probably working in the oil field in North Dakota, but we've run into the same issue here. You get, they got one bidder, there's no such thing as comparative analysis, you go with the one you get. So they're, they're building a new building in Dodson for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which...
And it's just the road crew?
Yeah, it's just for their, to build the space for their road crew to play with. But I thought it was, it was good information. I talked with, I did attend a, a training class last week in Helena that dealt with transport stations and canister sites. There was some good information shared there. One of the things that would, that we talked about, that it's kind of interesting that nobody ever thinks of until it's too late, and that is the solid waste department's role in disaster and emergency services. A perfect example of this is the blizzard that hit South Dakota here a month ago. Seventy thousand or a hundred thousand dead cattle, what do you do with those? Do they all end up in your canister sites? Do you take them to the landfill? How do you handle that?
What did they do with them?
I don't know what they did with them.
Well, most of them, actually, they just, those are how to hold and bury them.
Yeah. They have to give permission from the state to do that, they can't just do that.
No.
Especially that quantity.
Maybe they can only put so many in a certain area or something like that.
It brings up the question of, you know, what do we do here? We're kind of, we're in a pickle, is what we are with the road situation we have there. If the river floods and we can't get across the bridge, we need to have a backup plan for our trash, and that's something I'll bring up the solid waste board. And then talk to them and die, and we'll put that down in the paper and have a plan put together, but we only got one way of doing things right now, and we need to come up with an alternative.
I don't suppose they can do any more of it, they used to just burn them, remember, you probably remember how Rankin used to move all that cattle, there'd be, and it sure does, piles, and they just knows them up and burn them and then bury them.
I don't think they want to do that now.
Uh, I don't know, you probably couldn't burn them, I know like in forests, uh, horses, they just, you take dynamite, just blow them up, and then the pieces are scattered all over.
Oh, really?
They used to burn them too, but anymore, I think they just blow them with dynamite.
One gentleman that we know of in South Dakota had just purchased five hundred head cats, he was going to, and lost every single one of them.
I guess something...
He's done.
Light out.
There's no way he can recover.
Yeah, it's terrible. But it, it's one of those things that nobody ever thinks about until it happens, is what do you do with the mess? Even small-scale flooding, we had it out here, a couple of years ago, we were able to manage it before service, but when it flooded, we were able to take a canister there and let them clean up their place with that, but large-scale flooding, I don't know if we can do it here, we have to rethink the way we do things.
Well, and I'm sure you've all seen pictures of the Philippines right now, and I don't know how they're going to be able to clean that up, they just...
We see it with windstorms here, and just a lot of tree waste that we collect. That's bad enough to do it, but if you start knocking houses over, it will be a mess. But the transportation part of it is what I'm worried about, how do we get rid of it? We don't have a place to start. The D D Q is pretty good about working with counties or entities to come up with alternative plans to handle things with, both the relationships you need to build, and we'll try to do that.
Is there an upcoming workshop or something being, is this South Dakota mess is all fresh in everybody's mind?
Uh, I haven't seen anything that could be, I don't know for sure.
Of course, they've experienced it through the years, a lot, and this is probably maybe the biggest one, but they've experienced it, I can remember, you know?
Eastern Montana.
Eastern Montana and Dakota's there for, it just something happens to that country, you know, you know how it is, it just blows everything in. You know how it is. It just blows everything in.
And it blows one way and that's crosswise.
Yeah, and luckily here we're broke up enough and the gulch is in our mountain and stuff, you know. But, but it, you know, there's always something to happen already. But they experienced that forever down that country. Like I said, this is probably some of the worst because of where white summer ranchers completely out.
And the timing of the year, you know, it's still early in the year like that, so they weren't prepared for it. They're ready for it in January, December, but we're ready for it in October.
Well, I've heard a lot of people come at, well, why didn't they do something at that time? We don't get storms like that first of October.
I used to work down in that country in the Buffalo, South Dakota area. It can be fifty degrees one day and the next day you've got three feet of snow. And when it starts snowing, you just don't do it. You just roll up your tools and go home because that's where you're gonna be.
I've talked to ranchers from eastern Montana, you know, storms hitting the last days, you know. And somebody, they can't even find a pickup, so they just enforce the cattle. And soon they get bunched up, you know, they drift over. You know, it's, we don't know what weather's like. We're pretty lucky where we're at here.
We get quite a few ag newspapers and they show pictures, you know, of them digging sheep, for example, out, but they're just covered. Yeah. Amazing. Yeah. And some of those sheep have survived, you know. They would have a pocket of air around them so that they could keep breathing there. I would suggest that if one does come about, make tracks and be sure to be there. Goes without saying.
The only other thing that, I guess we're having a meeting tomorrow to discuss the safety program. That will work for me, I think, as long as everything goes smooth and we're able to get to the landfill and back and coming. I think that's all I got. Any questions?
How many days a week are we going to Helen? On an average?
Usually about three trips a week. Is what we, that's close to ninety tons of garbage a week per year.
And are we getting a lot of wood up there to be burned?
We are generating quite a tree pile. What we did last year was have them come in and grind that up and haul it off for hog fuel in Idaho. That works pretty good because I never have to touch it again. It's gone. Everybody thinks you can burn it for free, but what you have to do is get rid of the ash. You can't just leave it where it lays. You have to take it to the landfill. So we pay thirty dollars a ton to haul the ash to a landfill. It's about wash as to whether you pay to grind up the tree pile or all the way to the ash. The pile that we drowned last night was about a year and a half old. It averaged out to, it's about eight thousand dollars a year to grind that pile. Which it's about eight thousand dollars a year to haul away the ash. It's six and a half dozen minutes. And by grinding it, we don't have to worry about a smoldering pile up there. The D E Q says you're not supposed to allow a smoldering pile. It's supposed to be extinguished every day. We don't do that. You can't do that. You run the risk of burning up your equipment trying to do that. You push into that burning pile, it'll flare up in a hot heat and it's not the safest thing for you. We let them come and grind it up and it worked pretty well.
It would.
And it's gone. Somebody's given them use of it instead of the ash being blown down by what they're coming for a while.
I suppose after a huge windstorm here, we get lots of wood.
Being a tree city, you generate a lot of wood waste. I've been wanting to talk to Pat Gladberg about that. He's only gonna start pitching in for his disposal. He does a pretty good job of cleaning it up for us, so.
Good.
We won't be after them too bad.
He's a go-getter.
Yes.
He's done a lot of things for Godwin County?
Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay. Franklin, anything?
Nope.
Ms. Clark?
Two things. I had never thought about the emergency requirements either, and they are definitely there. In fact, when you do read about disasters, solid waste is always an issue. And so why we didn't think of it, I don't know. But anyway, L E P C, Local Emergency Preparedness, it'd be a great one for you to go to. It's the third Thursday every month at three o'clock. And when you get a third employee, it may free you up to be able to do that. And the other thing is, is in the past, we've had three canister watchers. So I, I support your getting one. Now it's, it's really in keeping with the past.
Okay. Hopefully it'll be a good one.
I'll count on you for that.
You never know. That's it. I'll be on my way.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Chris.
You too.
Have a good day, guys.
You too.
I have a November fourth minutes.
That's what we just did.
That's what you were looking at. Now I need a motion.
Well, I thought I did.
No.
Huh?
No.
I moved. We just need a second.
Okay. I thought I seconded it.
No.
I thought it was already, okay.
It's moved and seconded.
I thought it was done.
That we approve the minutes of November fourth, two thousand thirteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Anne, do I, do you need me to get back to what I told you on the restoration?
Oh, I think we're probably okay on that.
Many thanks. Restoration on the buyer, yes. Okay.
Claims in the amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Need a motion to pay, is that what you want?
I do.
How many motions?
No second.
It's a motion seconded that we approve claims with the date, voucher date of eleven, five, two thousand thirteen in the amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'm sorry. Do we have any more about this mitigation?
We have a questionnaire in there somewhere. Maybe that's it. We should fill that out and get it turned in so that they know we're interested.
Okay.
Is this a question?
It's a notice of intent on hazard mitigation program. I guess my conkey would be the point of contact then.
That's what I would say, yeah.
Actually, that's something we worked with Sean Higley on as the flood coordinator. And the guy who's been working on this is the boundary change with FEMA maps.
Oh, okay.
And so I think it should be Sean Higley as he's the one that's already started this. He brought this to us. We talked with him about two weeks ago on this issue. So he's the most knowledgeable at this time. He doesn't have to go through a learning curve to catch up.
Perhaps he would be better off filling this out than us. I mean, brief description of natural hazard to be mitigated, location of the project, and total estimated cost. I don't think we would have a clue on the cost.
Yeah, a leak.
It is a hazard. It's just a relocation of, I wouldn't say relocation, the boundary part. I don't know how the other, other than GPS it always, the boundary is gonna stay in the same place. It might be under, under the water, you know, the thing, right? It is my idea. I thought about that before. So, you know how, there are section marks, stuff like that. In this case, it wouldn't be any section mark other than a GPS location, I'm assuming.
What we're dealing with is an error. FEMA in redrawing the floodplain maps drew the southern boundary of Broadwater County following a new route that the river changed to, a new channel. What they should have done is maintained the old lines because
Right.
it's, it's more scientific now. We don't just follow the rivers. What we need to do is alert them to the error. They're aware of it. They sent us a letter and said they're willing to change it, but we need to go through the paperwork. We can certainly send it to Sean. I think we could do it ourselves and save ourselves, probably an hour of his time and pay. But that's all we're doing is, is putting forward an official request that they address the error.
So what would be the total estimated cost?
Just a question, or can you do?
I don't know that there's a cost to ask them to address that error. So I think an answer there would be zero.
Does your local jurisdiction have an approved P D M plan?
P D M would probably be on the first page. I don't know what that stands for.
Mitigation Grant Program.
We should, we shouldn't be asking for a grant. It's a mistake to have the fish. That's not right, boy.
I think so. I want to share some thoughts about one of the programs you may be eligible for and explain how you can apply for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. First, the background. The U S Department of Homeland Security's Federal Emergency Management Grant, FEMA, announced that the federal aid has been made available to the state of Montana to supplement the state tribal and local recovery efforts in the area affected by flooding during that period of May nineteenth through June third, two thousand thirteen. The first of these programs is a public assistance program. It is a program designed to help repair and restore disaster damages, infrastructure to be affected jurisdiction. The second is a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is intended to provide the state, counties, tribal nations, and our cities and towns with funding to conduct mitigation programs, which will lessen the damage caused by future disasters. Examples of the projects are elevation, acquisition, or relocation of structures from flood hazard prone areas, structural hazard controls such as detention, retention, basins, seismic retrofitting, and wild lion, wild land fire fuels reduction, to name a few. The eligible applicants for the grants are local and tribal governments with the FEMA-approved Pre-Disaster Mitigation Program. And that's the P D M, the Pre-Disaster Mitigation. All of which must be either unmapped or in good standings in the National Flood Insurance Program. The money provided by FEMA is a seventy-five percent federal share and twenty-five percent local share. The H M G P involves an application process, which may be time-consuming as the projects must undergo National Environmental Policy Act. If a large enough amount, H P M G funds can also be used as a planning grant to update your P D M plan if it has been reached in its five-year expiration. However, I would be happy to come to your jurisdiction to brief you if you feel you may have an eligible project. Please fill out the enclosed Notice of Intent and return it to our mitigation office by December second. If it appears you have eligible project and one that will possibly can be funded, we will schedule you for an application briefing at that time. You will be provided with H M G P funding. We will schedule you for the applicant's briefing and at that time give you your application. Your point of contract on this is Nadine Wadsworth and her phone number, or Kent Atwood and his phone number. And they're both with the State Disaster and Emergency Services Division.
Ms. Kiefer, I think I have some information on that I can share with you. Our current floodplain maps stop roughly at Herb Arbuckleby's property, four bar area property. So what this is, this is a potential for the county to apply for a grant for a flood study for the remaining portion of the county. So basically, from four bar area property south to the end of the county. Because our flood, our current floodplain maps stop there, like at his property. They don't go beyond that.
That's great.
Thank you.
We heard just a while back, Sean was here and asked what we talked about. And I think maybe that's what he...
And I think that that's what this sounds like, that's what this is, because he, him and I did have a conversation on that, on applying for this grant funding, that it could potentially be free if indeed we were approved for the grant. And this Atwood and Associates are the ones that are performing the current flood study.
So does this also affect their mistake?
No, not, not that I'm aware of. That, I guess I shouldn't say no so quickly. I'm not sure that it does or not. From what I know, it's only from Herb's property south to the end of the county, so it could fix that mistake.
Well, and it's funny it would stop there because so close to the dam. I mean, if we had a huge disaster and the dam went.
I'm sure it's a critical part of our county of the flooding infrastructure. Yeah, and I'm not sure why it stopped at.
That was the main statement. It went on up because I remember Herb telling about how Tom Helm's place would be underwater is what they said, you know. So just a, just a whole mess is what it is. And I, I think it just should stay out, just a bureaucratic mess, I think. When they're gonna do these floodplain things, they're, they just don't say, we're doing this floodplain. Let them straighten it out and get it right then. And I don't think we should even have to be involved in it. They never ask us about it when they're gonna come in and do it to start off with.
I think that they worked with Sean as a floodplain coordinator when they were going to do the initial one. You know, the thing about these flood studies, once they're done and they're, they're performed, we have to abide by them. We can't go back and say, oh, yeah, that doesn't make sense. We wanna go back to the old nineteen eighty-two maps, then we have to stick with what we have. So it is a big decision.
I, I would caution us to make that kind of a decision today. I think the three of us need to go back and watch YouTube, listen to what Sean said again, have a firm understanding of what this is, and then maybe table it till next Monday. But I, I think he addressed that, the what-ifs very clearly in YouTube, and I'm not gonna put words in his mouth. And I'd like to re-listen to it as well and hear what he said about the error, because somehow it's related, but I'm not sure exactly how. So before we just say we're not gonna have anything to do with addressing some of these issues, I think we need to re-listen to Sean's overwatch on YouTube.
I think that's a good idea, to check it out.
Yeah, me too.
I will leave that, this in here then, for next Monday.
Okay. And that's just paperwork for upcoming meetings the remainder of the day.
Oh, all right.
The top two are for the department head's social media and streaming protocols. And the other one is a public hearing that we'll be having, I think, the twenty-fifth of November at three o'clock.
For the road closure?
Mm-hmm. And there's copies of that in the clerk and recorder's office, planning, and the commissioner's office.
And the ad is running on this?
Mm-hmm.
And that obviously must be at the end of the road. And that obviously must be at the end of the road.
Must be. That's what I was asking about before. Of course, they probably just got the survey descriptions, but there must be a map showing it somewhere.
Well, because they couldn't close it if it wasn't the end of the road.
Yeah, that's what I said. We'll have to see what this shows on it. The only thing, it might be that the road makes a big swing through some of the property they want to change back. I don't know. Otherwise, they couldn't just change it and stop the end of it.
No.
That's being private property.
And it only affects three different families, I guess you would say. Jonathan and Diane Polly, Rick Deal for Winston Livestock, and Darko Smilovic from Winston Realty LLC.
No, that's Weasel Creek Road, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Is that... well, without a map, I wonder if that's the very end. There are some houses right there at the end. I don't know if they're on forest. Well, I guess they are maybe on that. Well, I don't know. I guess I can see a map for sure to see what it is.
It says easement is no longer of interest or use to the dominated property owner to protect the integrity of the dominant property and the servient property. It's Weasel Creek Road, 8 North, 1 West, southernmost 1,050 feet between sections 11 and 12, then turning east between sections 12 and 13 for just under 700 feet.
Well, 700 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Anne, is there a picture in there, or Nicole's there?
I can speak to that as well. I'm working on a map for that project, and from the best I can tell, it's actually Weasel Creek, you know, where it's an east-west road, you know, after it turns and heads south, but then it's an east-west road. This is an easement that takes off off of that road that cuts through private property. So it's actually not a bill road to the best of what I've seen on this map, but I'll bring a map up when I come up at 11:15. I'm not sure, but I'll bring the map up so you can look at it, so you'll have a better understanding of what that means.
Okay.
That would be good. And this is on the security?
It's on the department head's meeting at 11:30.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Okay.
If we have some extra time, both Doug and Debbie need to talk to us. They were planning on doing it after the department head's meeting. It's up to you. I don't know if 10 minutes is enough. So it's about the county audit and year-end reports.
Okay. And one thing I would like to do, and I haven't talked with you all about this, is I would like these department heads to tell us, what is your vision for the future? What would you like best to make your job and your office run more efficiently? Not that they aren't running efficiently already, but what's a way to improve?
And there's always room for improvement, no matter how good you are.
For all of us. Could we maybe call them and see if 10 minutes is enough and...
Yeah, I don't know. This room is sometimes locked.
Like today?
Yeah, like today.
Ask them if 10 minutes is enough. Does anybody want one of these handouts on JADEs?
Sure.
Don't have time. I forgot to bring in my Johnson mobile. It's the last one.
One little update is the withdrawal, which is not anything to do with the JADEs. But that has to be done in April period, or else the Department of Defense will have to surround the entire Limerstone Hills trading area and just close it off period. So in order to continue with the National Guard there, they have to have this agreement by April. And apparently, one of the bills is coming out, or one for, in the next two weeks in Congress. So we may know something more. Of course, have to go to the second house or the other house, and I'm not sure if it's House or the Senate bill, but I understand the two mirror each other very similarly. So we could know something fairly soon.
Is there anything we need to do?
No, no, but it's in the hands of our congressional district, our congressional membership at this time. So it's just a waiting game. We did what we had to as a county, actually before you and I took office, I think it was 2007, 2008. So it's just waiting for them to go through the process, but we could be at the end. I'll go through it. And that came from the military personnel at the different JADEs meetings.
Well, and I apologize for not being able to go, but until my health is more improved, I can't take on those things.
Absolutely.
I did go to the doctor in Hamilton yesterday, though, and he was very pleased at my progress, so.
Excellent. That's good news.
He said, "I don't think you realize how weak you were or how bad that hip was." I said, "Oh, I knew how bad the hip was."
Yeah.
"How we tried to take a step." I was well aware of that part. But he was pleased that... Interesting enough, just kind of a side note, I had to go to Hamilton to meet with him, and it was raining. Bob was hauling four loads, four semi-loads of cattle down to Ingamark, and he was in snow the whole way. Slip roads and...
The earth seemed to say, "Wait until north of this storm."
Mm-hmm. But then my roads weren't bad, but along the river there, this side of Missoula, it was really foggy and ugly.
It wasn't freezing on the road at the time?
No, it was close.
Yeah.
My car will tell you what the temperatures, and I watched that really close. What were some of the comments at the city meeting on safety?
There were two deputies there along with Brenda, and they both, it was Jamie Buck and Andy Anderson. And they both spoke very eloquently and from experience of having the Public Safety Commission. Both were very much in favor of it. The city council, a couple of members are not sure that we need an extra layer of bureaucracy, is what they said. They haven't received any complaints, and therefore, in April, they'll fix it. That's kind of what they were saying. So that was really, that was the two sides arguing it out.
You mean to talk to us?
Remember what we were talking about, the budget, or the audit? Kim Downing stopped by today, and because of all the changes going on and everything that's going on in our county, she said that if it would help us, we could go to a two-year audit instead of doing our audit this year. We could get books closed for this year. That has to be done by December 31st. But then she said that we need to have all of the information and everything, and that next year, we could just do a two-year audit instead of one year, which would really help. I know it would help Debbie out immensely because she's just sponked right now. If that's something you guys are okay with.
What did Kim feel about it?
What did Kim feel about it? She thought that was the best thing to do, that she was the one that actually suggested it.
To do that, we would void the current contract that we have with Denim and Downing and sign a new contract for a two-year audit.
Which would entail helping us close, let us both clean out, which we haven't done yet. Help us get through that, make sure, we've got $500,000 in federal grant monies, but we've met that threshold, do a federal audit or not, close our capital account, asset accounts, make sure they're in balance, and make sure adjusting entries for solid waste run, enterprise fund. They would have that.
And they would come right here to help you with that?
They're looking at coming mid-November, if we can get our schedules coordinated, mid-November, December. If we can get our schedules coordinated to help us close it out so that we can hopefully get the annual report filed with the state by December 31st, so we don't get fined for it being late. It's doable. It's not work, it's doable. We're not adverse to work, so.
What are your thoughts, Franklin?
Now, this is from the audit company, right?
Right, Denim and Downing.
Yeah. What's our requirements from the state?
Our requirement is to have the fiscal year closed out by December 31st. That's part of the audit. There's nothing. We're not going against any statute or anything to do this. She said they've done it in other counties before when situations were similar.
Well, you still have to meet the deadline on the 31st for everything except the audit.
Right. For that, to close the books out for year-end, yeah. That's not actually... that's... the audit company does use the information, but that's not something that they require. That's a legal requirement we have to meet.
That's why I said we've got to meet the legal requirements. We can't just go by this audit.
Yeah, and that's what this would do. It would allow us to meet that. She's going to come down mid-December, help us if we needed to close those books out, and then we can wait until next year and do a two-year audit instead of just a one-year audit.
This is a way to help us meet that legal requirement.
Yeah.
Yes, when we hired him, she said that that's what they had done for the first three, four years for us when we first hired him. It's done by annual audits, and then they went to the more yearly, as the finance officers was doing a lot more of getting the year-end stuff closed. But that's why she suggested we kind of go back to that, catch it back up.
And so then after these two years, would we be going two years again, or...
It's up to you guys. Two years works, or back to the yearly? That was your discretion. As long as every year, the annual financial report with the state is filed on time, that was your discretion.
Is Kim Levon that would come?
I believe so. She mentioned a John Paul out of Helena would come and help with some of the onsite stuff, which would save the cost of her traveling down here. A lot of it, I can send via email, down with reports and send it via email, so there's the digital copy, so to speak, so it would save time.
And Debbie's started a lot of that already with the budget, working with Lewis and Clark County this year. So she's actually got some of the groundwork done, but because this is such an important step, that's why Kim, I think, stepped forward and said, "We can help you guys just to make sure everything gets done, gets done correctly and helps with, you know, some of the people involved."
Makes sense.
Yeah, actually, she's given us a favor by giving...